And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2023, under new legislation enacted July of 2022. The statute, Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, in the Republic of Russia, stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will turn it over to our clerk for correspondence. Kevin?
We have one piece of correspondence. We received an email from Elizabeth Morgan dated August 18th inviting the school committee to the pride celebration on the town green.
Thank you. All right, moving on to approval of minutes, there is a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August 9th, 2022, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie, I see you, but I'm not sure if we can hear you yet. Okay, we're gonna skip Julie for now, and yes for me. All right. Oh, Jamie, I didn't even see you there. Sorry, Jamie.
No problem, yes.
Thank you. All right, and yes for me as well. Moving on to visitor comments, do we have any visitor comments? If there's anyone at home who would like to comment, feel free to use the raising hand function or turn on your screen and wave at us.
Hi, sorry.
No worries, hi Julie. All right, any public comment, last call. We don't have anyone here. Okay, we are moving forward to school committee announcements and recognitions. Any announcements or recognitions from anyone on the board? Gianna?
I'm sure we're all gonna have the same theme going, but thank you Nicole, I just wanted to just wish everybody the best of luck for the new school year. I know I've been in my building for the past two weeks now and the excitement is just building and everybody's, you know, fixing up their rooms and getting ready for the students, so I just wanted to wish all of LPS good luck for a new school year.
Wonderful, thank you. Mary?
Same, and also thank you to all the behind the scenes work that happens during the summertime, from so many of our staff members, our district leadership, our admin teams, our custodial staff, our food staff. A lot of work happens to make the buildings look as great as they look and for everything to run smoothly for the opening of schools, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other school committee announcements or recognitions? All right, we will move forward to business with guests. Our first order of business and guests is the public hearing on the naming of the Long Meadow High School History Resource Room for former teacher, department chair, and former school committee member John J. Fitzgerald. Would you like to give everyone a quick reminder?
Certainly, so upon recommendation of the naming subcommittee, the committee had elected to hold this public hearing to discuss the potential of naming the Long Meadow High School History Resource Room after John J. Fitzgerald. John was a longtime school committee member, longtime Long Meadow High teacher, and someone who was very active typically in the town for decades, and so this is an opportunity for the public if they're so inclined to provide feedback to the committee on the potential to name the resource room after John.
All right, wonderful. I will open the public hearing for comments on the proposal. Note that those comments can also come from school committee members if they have comments to make, and to those of you at home, same rules apply, raise your hand or wave your arms around and let us see that you're here and we'll call on you. Any public comment? All right, last call for public comment, and we will go ahead and close the public hearing for that. The next step is for the committee to consider this for a vote at our next meeting, so we'll bring this back up again in early September. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is the new special education school, and we're gonna hear from a few of our administrators relating to this topic.
I'll kick it off, so the Tate Learning Center has petitioned, is petitioning the school committee and the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to locate a private special education day school in Long Meadow, and so the committee's obligation is to review the curriculum to see if it matches Long Meadows in thoroughness and efficiency. Those are the words directly from Mass General Law, and so I appreciate that Sue Bertrand, Assistant Superintendent Sue Bertrand, Director of People's Services Jean Fontaine have met with, reached out to leaders of the Tate Learning Center, who are with us on the call on our meeting tonight as well, and Sue and Jean had an opportunity to review the curriculum, get to know the leaders of the Tate Learning Center, and even visit the facility, so with that, I'll turn it over to Sue, and Jean probably would be helpful if you wanna come on up to the microphone just in case.
Anywhere, anywhere, it's good.
And Sue, maybe you could have our, kick it off by having our guests introduce themselves.
So, maybe Christine, if you start with introductions, you can toss it off to your colleagues there and we can hear who you are and what you're all about, your title, your roles.
Of course, I'm Christina Rizzo Pedro, I own Tate Behavioral Inc., and I also direct the TLC, the Tate Learning Center, over on 594 Converse Street in Long Meadow, and along with me is our SPED director and executive clinical director, and I'll let them introduce themselves. So Kelly, if you wanna go?
Hi, everyone, my name is Kelly St. Clair, I'm the Executive Clinical Director at Tate, I'm a behavioral analyst, and I'll pass it to John.
Hi, I'm John Lynn Part, I'm the Special Education Director for Tate.
Great.
Sue, you wanna take it, and then we'll talk about the review process and if the committee has questions for Sue or for our visitors from Tate Learning Center, it'd be a great opportunity.
Jean and I can probably tag came in. Jean's actually visited a couple times, and the Christina who owns the Learning Center is also owner of Tate Behavioral, it's a consulting agency that we've used for many years, and they're really well respected in the behavioral world, and so they decided to open up this school over in Long Meadow, and it's in the same building as the Hebrew School was prior, Heritage Academy, so it's a great location, the building is set up to be a public, or to be a school, it's got nooks and crannies that are great for working one-to-one, it's got big spaces, another nice thing is that it's located right near the JCC, so students can take advantage of some of the programs there, do some internships there because they're planning to serve students, I think, even pre-take through 22 eventually, and so they have a great program, and all of the curriculum that, and materials that they're using are, Jean, you could speak to this probably too.
Yeah, they pretty much are in line with the curriculum that we're using for students with those ability levels, so it's a lot of access and entry points to the typical curriculum, life skills curriculum, you know, just kind of, some of the reading curriculum is very similar to the training that we send our special educators for, so they're using Lynda Mood Bell programs for reading, I think it was Edmark also for reading, so very similar high-quality curriculum materials for students with significant challenges who are really accessing the curriculum at entry points, so many of these students that would attend there may not be diploma-eligible, so there's students who will stay on in special education till 22, and their program is bringing students to that and probably beyond if they expand in the way they want to, so I was very impressed, and like Sue said, we have worked with Tate, many of our families in town have worked with Tate for in-home services, so students who may need in-home ABA services from, through their health insurance would contract and have these providers in their home, helping them with their child developing skills, so that's great, and then they also have speech and language services that we probably are more familiar with and have had a longer relationship with Hillary and Marissa that were formerly Communicare that have also become part of Tate, so it's really an exciting opportunity for students, not just in Long Meadow, but really for Western Mass. It's not uncommon when we're trying to place a student into a private setting to meet their needs, when they need that higher level of care and intervention, for families to wait nine, 10, 12 months for placements, that's how long the waiting lists are, so I look at this as a wonderful opportunity, not just for Long Meadow, but for families all over Western Mass that can access a high-quality program for students with some significant learning needs, so it's good.
Wonderful. Questions?
Nope.
All right, we'll open this up for discussion. Any questions from anyone on the committee? They're very quiet tonight, yes, go ahead, Gianna.
Thanks Nicole, thank you all up on the screen in that world there, but Jean and Sue, thank you for the, for your thoughts on it. Christina or Jean, or anyone, did you all say about how many, how many students can be serviced at the school, or is there like a cap?
So those are questions for Christina.
Christina, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. In terms of how many kids we can service, so that's a great question, so we're highly specialized, it's a very high staff-to-student ratio, we're one-to-one, so our total goal in terms of capacity is about 15 to 18 students, and so it will depend a little bit on future students we take and their level of need, but about 15 to 18 total, and currently we have 11 enrolled students.
And then Christina, so one-to-one, does that mean like one educator for one student?
So, yes, there is one learning coach, so it is a staff person who is essentially at the paraprofessional level, who has typically a registered behavior technician credential, and might also have some additional speech-language credentials, but yes, every student that we're receiving typically would have a one-to-one on their IEP, so as we seek accreditation, our model through DESI will be that one-to-one model. Our class size, this is very small, about four to five kids per classroom, each classroom will have a special educator assigned and a behavior analyst assigned, and then we have floating specialists in the building, like speech-language, AAC, AT, P, T, OT, so it's a lot of people in a big space, and so keeping the total enrollment low will allow us to really spread out and maximize that space as best we can.
So they, so they go through their school system and they get an IEP, and then, how do, so is there like, then like the team meets within that school and then they decide they go to you, and then you all do all the IEP stuff?
Pretty much exactly, so we, we receive referrals from sending districts, and yeah, we're receiving students whose individual IEP teams have determined that they need a more restrictive placement than whatever setting they might be coming from, so sometimes it's a public setting, sometimes it might be another private setting, but exactly, and then we receive a referral, we have a pretty detailed screening process, and we go through that and we work with that sending IEP team, and then we either accept or reject them for placement, and, and then they come to us that way.
Okay, so that, so that's for students on site, and then Jean, I think, mentioned or, do then, do children from, who are actually attending your learning center, do they have access to like the ABA and stuff?
Well, that's not part of the, what you're approving, so I think that's separate from the school.
Okay.
The, the insurance-based therapies?
Yeah. Is that something that y'all offer to, to kids who aren't at the school?
Exactly, so Tate Behavioral as just sort of the umbrella of the company, we have a lot of different sort of diversified offerings, and so, yeah, Jean and Sue, Susan both mentioned sort of in-home ABA, so we do have various different types of services that are sort of described on our website, or, you know, somebody at Tate could kind of talk through that, and then the Tate Learning Center just happens to be a 10-year goal that we had as a company, it's always been a really significant goal of ours to truly make a powerful impact on the lives of individuals needing really intensive care, and so this is, is just an endeavor that we began last, about a year ago, actually, but yes, we do have other offerings such as in-home ABA, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry Nicole.
No, no, that's fine. Any further questions or conversation from the committee?
I'll just follow up with thank you.
Thanks for your questions, much appreciated.
So before you vote, and Christina, you can jump in here, to the approval by the school committee, again, it's, it's a, it's a recognition perhaps that the curriculum matches what we would offer here, and then from there, what this allows is the Tate Learning Center to apply for, to DESI, to be recognized as a private special education day school that can receive public school tuition, and DESI does a really thorough deep dive on the physical plant, they have to make sure that Tate has appropriate policies in place, everything relating to building occupancy is reviewed by DESI, their approach to public records and student records is reviewed, so it's, it's a very thorough review that DESI will conduct. I suspect that's going to take many, many months before you're able to pull that application completely together and, and ultimately have DESI review and approve it. It's a long road for you, I guess, is what I'm saying, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much for coming out tonight and talking to us and being willing to answer some questions. I don't see any other questions or commentary, so we do have a possible motion.
I move that the school committee endorse the new special education school, the Tate Learning Center, pending approval by the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you very much, and best of luck with your endeavors, we hope the accreditation process goes smoothly for you.
Thank you very much, everybody, so much appreciated. Thank you.
Wonderful school year.
We can help more, yeah?
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we will turn this back over to Dr. O'Shea for introduction of some of our new administrative staff.
All right, very pleased to introduce two new members of the administrative team to the school committee and to the community at large. I'll, I'll start with Dr. David, David Allen, this will be our second principal Allen in Long Meadow Public Schools. Dr. Allen started on August 15th as Principal of Blueberry Hill, and it has been a sprint since, since before his official day of appointment began, so, David, you wanna give us maybe just a brief background and perhaps the committee will have some questions for you as well?
Sure. Yeah, I was, I was saying to, I was talking with Jean, thinking I've been here a month, but it's been a week. Yeah, so my family and I, we are coming from, we came from India, so we were there for the past four years, working at the American International School, Chennai, that was a wonderful experience, but we decided to come back to the United States, and although we were living in Northwest Portland, Oregon, we decided to land here in Western Massachusetts, and we are currently living in South Hadley, and I, when I was talking to Dr. O'Shea, I said, it seemed like it was meant to be, you know, that the position came open and it just, it seemed like a great fit, so I was previously assistant principal, so I was an associate principal at the elementary school in, in the American International School, Chennai, and then in Portland, Oregon, I was assistant principal, then principal at a large elementary school, it was a Japanese immersion dual-language program.
So welcome, David, it's been, it's been a busy week that has felt like a month at least, and specifically around hiring, we've had, we'll talk a little bit about that later, but we've had, you know, a significant amount of turnover, and so we've been challenged to find some qualified staff, so David's has been very, very busy with that, and while running things like popsicle socials and meet and greets for parents, so, so welcome, David, we're, we're really happy to have you aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have questions or commentary for Dr. Allen?
Just wanted to say thank you.
Welcome on board.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
All right, thanks, David. And then, and also following up, Ms. Heidi Drowick, Heidi joins us as an assistant principal at Long Meadow High School, and Heidi most recently served in a similar role at Minichog over in Hinton, Orem, so, welcome Heidi, it's been, Heidi started with us on July 1st and is, is competently filling the shoes of Mr. Nuggerly, and so we're happy to have Heidi on board as our assistant principal at Long Meadow High, so maybe similarly, a little, little bit about yourself, and perhaps the committee will have some questions.
So thanks, so my name's Heidi Drowick, I do not have the travel of India, but I do, I live in Belchertown, so, but I'm coming from Minichog, where I was for a good number of years, I'm really excited, so one of my passions is student leadership and school culture, so you'll hear a little bit about that as we come upon some new opportunities now that restrictions have lifted after the last couple of years, the state and the region are kind of ramping up on opportunities for student leaders. I did meet with some of the student leaders on the 12th, so that was a great opportunity to meet them and to hear their ideas and their dreams and their passions for the school and how they want to make sure that they leave their legacy, so I thank you, it's an honor to be here, and I'm really excited about the upcoming school year, so, thank you.
All right, questions or comments to Ms. Drowick?
The same, thank you for joining Long Meadow Public Schools.
Thank you for the opportunity, it's gonna be a great year.
And welcome to the team.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, nice to meet you all.
Thank you both.
All right, we are moving on to administrative reports, and Dr. O'Shea will turn to you.
Certainly, so I have included a written report in your, in your packet, we, we sort of kicked off the year today with a new employee orientation, many thanks to Sue for coordinating that, along with our, along with her assistant Tammy Filiel, and our mentor coordinator on Dr. Aron Gelinis, so it was a busy day for our new employees, a good chance for them to get their feet under their, under themselves, and get their network credentials and their computers, and meet some key people. Tomorrow is convocation, so I thank Nicole for being willing to represent the school committee, and address the, address the faculty and staff as we convene in the Long Meadow High auditorium, and then we're off and running next week with the opening of school on Monday, the 29th, and then the class of 2035, I think it is, the kindergartners join us on Tuesday, so we're looking forward to that. Certainly, there's some dates on the report, if anybody, if any committee members would like to join us for any of those activities, we'd love to have you. We had an administrative retreat last week, and our principals, assistant principals, and central office admin gathered offsite for a couple of days of reflection, leadership development, some school law updates, and then some good old-fashioned team building, we had a lot of fun, and it's good to step away from our offices and connect offsite with that retreat. I mentioned in the report, the staffing challenges, it's sort of a nationwide phenomenon, the challenge school districts are facing with the educator pipeline, sort of, we've, we've seen our challenges here in Long Meadow, particularly in the area of finding qualified para-professionals, special educators, we've hired quite a few positions this year, it's been the most active, busy hiring summer that I can remember, it's kept our entire administrative team and our clerical staff on their toes, Diane is actively involved in that process, and so it's been a busy summer for her as well, but many thanks to our administrators for working collaboratively to sort of problem solve together, we've sort of creatively put together solutions across buildings, and, you know, Sue and Jean especially have been at the heart of that, and Mr. Mazza is always supporting us with information and on budgetary impacts and things, so thanks to the entire team for that. We have our opening day with staff tomorrow, and we have three days of time without students, two days of professional development, Friday's a teacher workday, kind of a rich menu of professional development over the next couple of days, focusing on safety training, training around behavioral strategies, we are going to give our elementary educators plenty of time to work on the Bridges Math Curriculum, but they'll, they'll certainly need more time in the days and weeks ahead, we're continuing our commitment to universal design and so much more, so we're, we're looking forward to kicking off in the auditorium tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. I will put a notice out to families, hopefully before the end of the week, about sort of what they can expect with regard to COVID prevention and response and mitigation in the coming year, it would be, you know, no universal mask requirement, as this committee well knows, I will have an opportunity to review some of our COVID practices with our, our health team on Friday, that's our nurses, and town health officials, and I've also invited LEA leadership to that as well, so that's on Friday. The testing program that we had in place last year, it really helped us get us through some tough spots, but we will no longer need that in the coming year, most of the guidance is, is really moving us away from broad surveillance testing or testing of asymptomatic individuals, and, and the quarantine and isolation protocols as of now, for positive individuals are the same as they were in June, in other words, if there's a positive case, individuals would be expected to isolate for five days, on day zero through five, and then they can return to school on day six wearing a mask, and so that's where we left off with positive individuals in June, and that's where we'll pick up as, as school begins. The one change is that anyone that's exposed, so long as they remain asymptomatic, they would not need to quarantine or be excluded from school at work, so, so that's good news that we're in that place, that asymptomatic individuals, even if they are exposed outside of school or in school, that it wouldn't result in them being required to be quarantined. We'll stay committed to hand hygiene and ventilation practices and air purification and all those things that we work in partnership with the maintenance department on, and so we'll keep our eyes on it, you know, I think we're, we're still on that continuum where, you know, we, we go from being more restrictive to less restrictive, and we're, we're able to move towards the far side of that less restrictive continuum that we looked at regularly last year, but that doesn't mean that we, you know, that we can discontinue being attentive, we ought to stay attentive to COVID, stay in touch with town health officials, and, and continue to educate staff and families on where we are in terms of COVID-19, so we're in a good place, it's, it's essentially business as usual with our, with our staff and our students, we won't have distancing protocols in place, but, you know, obviously we'll continue to support families and students and staff if they have a positive COVID event, so we'll get a notice out to families hopefully by the end of the week, perhaps after that meeting that I have with our, our health officials on Friday, so, so that's, that's it, if you have any questions, I'm open.
Good. Any questions on the committee? All right, seeing none, we will continue along. Assistant Superintendent reports, I see there are none. Good?
I don't think I know how the first few days of school goes, next.
School Committee Chair report. School committee chair report. I'll just echo the thank you to all of the educators and staff who have been working hard this summer at our summer programming, and those who are working hard behind the scenes, getting things ready for the return of students next week. Also, a big welcome back to all of our educators, staff, and students, especially a big welcome to our new students as they attend some orientations this week and welcome-back events. So, welcome to all of our students, and the whole committee wishes you a healthy and happy and wonderful school year. Also, welcome back to our student athletes. It's nice to see the fields busy again with activity, and we wish you well for your coming seasons. And then finally, a shout-out to the organizers of the upcoming Long Meadow Pride Festival. Pride Festival is scheduled for September 18th from 11:00 to 5:00 on the town green, and we hope to see everyone there. All right. Moving forward, other reports. LPVAC.
There's no meeting this month, so we'll resume meeting next month.
All right. Wonderful. Energy and sustainability.
No report this time.
There we go. SEAL.
Just a reminder that we will be, SEAL meetings will, Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow meetings will be starting up back up again in September. I don't have any information on the dates and such, but keep an eye out.
All right. Wonderful. Tax ceiling task force. Jamie, anything there?
Nothing that I'm aware of, unless Marty or Tom have something.
All right. Wonderful. Moving on to subcommittee reports. There is no report from finance. I know policy and curriculum, I think, are both scheduled to meet coming up in the next few weeks. Naming committee is done, as far as I'm aware, and building committee development sub has two meetings coming up, for those who are wondering a little bit more about that. The first meeting will be next week, on the 31st, Wednesday, the 31st, at 7:00 p.m. and the following, correct? And the following meeting will be September 7th, the following Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m. The 6th and 7th, I was a little afraid we're going to get mixed up there. Pretty sure those are correct. We are moving on to ongoing business, speaking of the middle schools, middle school project update.
Sure. Quick middle school project update for you. We had released the applications to solicit membership for the school building committee, and you'll recall that there are sort of two at-large positions that the school committee would be responsible for, and two at-large positions that the select board would be responsible for appointing. Last I checked, we had 18 applicants. Nine residents had applied to serve as potential appointments by the school committee. Nine residents had volunteered to be appointed by the select board. So, that's a good pool of candidates. I think the window on that closes on August 30th for your appointments and August 31st for the select board. We, the school committee at your last meeting, you had approved the initial compliance certificate indicating that we'd be in compliance with the MSBA grant program. The select board did the same thing at their last meeting. They reviewed that document. It has been signed by the appropriate parties and sent back to the MSBA. So, that was our first official deliverable to the MSBA in connection with the middle school project. So, that felt good to send that on its way. We're busy working on the other deliverables, which includes an educational profile and a report on our maintenance practices, and so that work is ongoing. I did attend the select board meeting, most recent select board meeting, to talk about the financing structure for the feasibility study. Mr. Peserszak had recommended to the select board that it be funded at $1.6 million, and so he had presented to the select board some potential ways to structure that, the financing of that feasibility study. The select board didn't act on that recommendation. They sort of took it under advisement, and they'll take it up at a future meeting. The feasibility study, we had spent some time, Mr. Mazza, the town manager, Mr. Peserszak and I had spent some time reviewing feasibility studies that were conducted that were associated with some recent projects. There's some publicly available MSBA data on the scope and cost of these feasibility studies, so that's where the $1.6 million recommendation came from. And if that's something you'd like to learn more about, I can point you in the right direction in terms of the MSBA data that is available. But potentially, the October 25th town meeting would take that under consideration, that would, they would need to vote to support the funding of that feasibility study. And we'll report back to you at sort of a future meeting on exactly what the select board has in mind in terms of financing that project. So, looking forward to that. Still, the committee, sort of, I'll give you an outline at some point of the community engagement and outreach work that we're going to initiate. A few thoughts in terms of community forums, information sessions, leveraging LCTV, running some tours. I would welcome the opportunity to bring committee members around to our two middle schools, just so that you have a sort of an informed understanding of the condition of those two buildings. So, that's something that Mary and I had talked about, and so I'd welcome that opportunity if we can arrange that and be happy to tour those buildings with you. And if there's any other ways that we can help you or help the community kind of understand the next steps in that project, you know, all yours. So, we're, things are underway and pointed in the right direction.
All right. Wonderful. Questions or comments related to the middle school building project? I don't see any. All right. We are moving forward. New business. We are going to be turning our attention back to Ms. Fontaine to talk to us about L students.
All right. Jean is on the hot seat this evening. Thank you for joining us at a busy time. Sort of appreciate the committee's willingness to take this on as a sort of unanticipated agenda item. We want to make sure that we appropriately serve our English language learners, and we've had some new students arrive in Long Meadow that we're eager to support and serve appropriately. So, Jean comes to you tonight with a recommendation that we have all worked on collaboratively, and so, turn it over, Jean, on the need for this position and where we've been recently in terms of service levels and where we need to be this year.
Thank you. So, I put together some data. I think you all have it, and I could see a typo, of course, right when I walked in the room tonight, so I apologize for that. So, if you look at the staffing, student and staffing data, so I've broken it down by level, K to 5, you know, obviously, elementary, middle, and high school level, and then I give you totals, and those are total students enrolled in the ELL program, not including any students that we would call FLEPP monitoring. So, when students exit the program, they become what is known as a FLEPP, which is a former limited English proficiency student, and we do have to monitor their progress and make sure that they're, you know, continuing to do well. So, those students are not included in these. So, over the years, our basic enrollment has kind of stayed the same. It's fluctuated anywhere from like, you know, really 15 to 20 students that are accessing services. So, if you look in the 1819 school year, we had 26 students, 10 what are considered beginners. So, those are students who can have no English or very, very limited. And at the time, our staffing was 2.6 teachers. In the 1920 school year, we kind of stayed the same with this, you know, levels being the same, enrollment, less beginners, but we were at 2.6 staffing. Then, in the 2021 school year, that was our first COVID year back, where we were hybrid and all of that, and we reduced to 2.0. And we were able to meet the needs of our students, because if you see, our enrollment dropped a little bit, but what really dropped was the beginners. So, if you look at last school year, 2122, we had 16 elementary students. We had three middle and two at the high school, which is only 21 students, but nine of them were beginners, and some of them joined us at the, towards the end of the school year. So, in March, we actually created a substitute position and brought in a third ELL teacher to get us to the end of the year, to serve those beginner students. So, if you see at the bottom, the staffing, we were 2.0 for most of the year and ended the year with that third position needing to be able to cover the needs of all the students that had moved in. So, currently, the 2223 school year, not 2220, and these numbers, I have an asterisk there because we have not finished screening students. So, this is our number as of today, which is changing because we're still registering students and we're still screening them to see whether or not they need the program. So, currently, we have 12 elementary, five at the middle, three at the high school, which is really only a total of 20. Where it gets dicey is we have 12 beginners, which is a lot. So, when you look down below, I've included the DESI guidance, which actually just came out this month, that kind of, you know, it gets changed every few years, but this tells you what you're supposed to provide these students. So, all of the students are screened in using WIDA. They all participate in access testing. That gives us their scores, so we got their June scores. We've updated them to see where our returning students are, and then we screen the incoming ones. So, students that score below a 2.4, and these are not grade levels, so the scores are from 1 to 6. Students exit the program, I believe the exit criteria right now is 4.5 or 4.7 in that range, and we have some discretion. If we don't think they're ready, we would hold on to them a little bit. So, anyone below a 2.4 would be considered a beginner and needs at least two blocks a day or three. We have always gone with the two because we, that's all we could accommodate. So, our students get two 45-minute blocks. Because our beginners are spread across 12 grade, 13 grade levels, you can't group them. So, when you're a low-incidence district like Long Meadow, you look at, you know, 20 students, how on earth, like, it doesn't make sense to have three full-time teachers. But when students are requiring two blocks a day, and that might be one-on-one and it's pullout, you cannot meet the needs of 12 beginners without providing that staffing level. So, looking at that, and, you know, then the students who are above that get at least, that's the language, is at least one 45-minute. That is a pullout, direct instruction. So, this year, what the DESI has added is a little caveat at the bottom, that academic tutoring in content and in-class support, those don't count. So, I can't send them to the reading center or do something and replace an ESL service or an ELL service. That needs to be direct instruction to those learners. So, when we started doing the math the other day, and we were trying, because right now we have one ESL teacher, we did hire a second today, hopefully. So, we were kind of getting a handle on what we need, and it's quickly becoming clear to me that we do need that third position that we kind of had in the spring. So, I'm requesting that we add that and be able to move forward and support our new students coming in. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Wonderful. Questions? Yes, Kim.
So, a couple of questions. Thank you for the overview. I mean, it definitely makes a lot of sense. I just want to make sure I understand some things. So, if we had three, we would presumably have one person at the high school, one person at the middle school, and one person at Blueberry?
Yes, and then, no, it wouldn't actually go that way. Blueberry needs a dedicated teacher because of the needs, and then the other two would cover everything else and possibly some of Blueberry.
Okay.
So, these are, our ELL teachers are hired as district teachers, and then we spread them out where they need to be. So, last year, the teacher who historically has covered the high school, she worked at Glenbrook and Will Swamp, so she traveled to all three schools every day to cover everyone. So, it's very flexible, a lot of teamwork, so it just kind of depends on where the students fall. So, it's not building-based, it's district-based.
Okay. And then, how long are students beginners? Are they beginners for multiple years or?
They typically aren't more than two years, but we, I was, I think I was telling Marty this earlier today, we get our students in and out fairly quickly. So, usually by year three, they're either hitting that mark or they've hit it, or they're close. So, it's pretty quick, you know?
And how long on average do students stay in this program, either as foundational or transitional students?
That's individual progress, so, you know, there are a lot of factors in that, like, so coming in at foundational, you could come in with, which some of our new students have no English, none at all. So, we would expect they're going to be there for probably, if they're a first grader, you would expect their elementary career and then move out.
I mean, that's sort of my question, because I have no knowledge of any of this, right?
Yeah, so I think it, obviously, every kid is different, you know, there are other factors outside. How engaged are they in the community? Their parent and family language at home, are they speaking English or a different language? So, there's, there are a lot of factors that influence, but overall, our students get out of the program fairly quickly, but they're only evaluated annually. So, once you're in, you're in for the year, and then you take the access testing. The window is in the, you know, after January, it's like February to April or whatever it is, and we try to push it as far out as possible to give them the best benefit of their score.
Thank you.
Did I answer?
Yeah, no, that's right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Tiana?
Thank you for all this, Jean. I, just as a follow-up to Kevin's question, so, we're looking to hire a third ELL teacher. So, there'd be three. One is stationed at Blueberry, and then the other, she would do what you described, going to different schools.
There, the potential is that one will need to be at the middle, at Glenbrook, because of the needs of the students there.
Okay, so then the third?
Would do high school and Will Swamp.
And Will Swamp.
And that's today, but like I said, things are changing right now in the district by the minute, so that's the plan today, and we'll see who arrives tomorrow and how kids do on screening. But I think it would be a really wise investment for this year and even moving forward. So, the reason that we, you're only seeing four schools is we only offer the services at four schools. So, if you're a Center School student or a Williams student and you need ESL, we move you to get the services because we've been operating with, you know, two teachers, so it was not possible to cover all six schools. So, one of the things moving forward, if we add this in beyond this coming school year, because it's kind of too late for this year, we could look at making this a service that's available in every school, so that we wouldn't be moving students around the district.
Other questions?
Mary?
So, I guess just a budget question. Did we have students enroll this summer? You said we've been increasing, but we had a sub at the end of last year.
Right.
So, did we anticipate that we wouldn't need the sub this year?
We did, and then had a surprise.
Okay, got it.
So, when you look at the number, like, the 16 at the elementary last year, and then we have 12 there now, they're not all the same students. So, we had seven or eight that have exited, and these are new. So, it's not, you know, that number is always a different roster. So, we had our scores in June, so we knew what our numbers looked like, and we've had some significant movement.
And we'll be able to cover this with our current budget?
Yeah, I would recommend we use funds that have been recognized as attrition in the '23 budget, so positions that have turned over that weren't planned for, and with the new hires coming in at a rate that is below what was budgeted, finance sub, I think we talked about it at our last meeting, we should have enough to cover it. Additionally, we're going to have lost time, so positions that are vacant, that aren't filled with the start of the school year, I think will add to that balance. So, that's what I'd recommend we use the funds for.
Okay. Other questions? Jamie?
Thank you, Jean. My question is just, I guess the same question last year. My question is just, I guess the same question last year. I get that we want to have the services at all of the elementary schools, but why aren't we kind of, you know, getting everybody to one elementary school? It just doesn't make sense to me. I don't know why you wouldn't have the teachers stay at that one school and create, you know, whether it's an area, whatever it may be, for those students versus hiring, you know, staff and spreading them all out across Long Meadow.
Well, there's actually only one student right now at Wolfswamp. So of the 12 elementary students, 11 of them are at Blueberry? I don't know if that, and I think-
So that's kind of my question. So, you know, next year, you were talking about, you know, maybe we need additional. So this year, I get it, and I know how Tom's going to pay for it, just because we have some pretty big gaps in, you know, our staffing levels, you know, so there's going to be extra dollars. But going into next year, assuming we're fully staffed, it becomes a more difficult discussion, right? So what I'm just saying is if you have students, you know, in these other schools, why wouldn't we get everybody to Blueberry, I guess, is what I'm saying. I get that some-
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. Yep, I appreciate that. And I'm not saying adding more staff beyond the three for next year, so I just want to clarify that. I'm saying if we make that investment now and we're able to maintain that, that would be a possibility. The reason I talk about that as a possibility is I think the district has made a large commitment to being inclusive and equity and diversity. And it's really tough to tell a family that arrives in this community and they purchase a home or they're, you know, doubled up with a family, depending on where they're coming from, that, welcome, but you can't go to school in your neighborhood because you speak a different language. So I will, ultimately, it will be your decision, but I will continue to advocate for having ESL services in every neighborhood school.
Sue?
No, I get that, and I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but there's a lot of different things that we say that may not be favorable, such as, you know, the busing things and certain people, all sorts of things that are of concern. I get that, and we're also a pretty small community. I'm just thinking from the best services for the child, for the best interest of the child and the family, having everybody in one spot might actually let us do a better job because maybe we have a little bit more staffing. I just think we should at least consider it and understand it. If most of the children are already at one school, I get the philosophy of, you know, providing that service so students and families don't have that extra burden of getting over to Blueberry, but if it's the right decision for them from a academic, from a language standpoint, I think we should at least talk through it, especially if we get into next year and that extra position isn't available. You know, we should at least have, hey, what does Plan B look like? That position, you know, is not an option because we're fully staffed, and it's either we have four, you know, third or fourth or fifth grade teachers and keep our classrooms or we do this. So, you know, right now, we're, we definitely don't, I guess you'd call it a luxury, Marty and I probably would agree with that, but we're a luxury that we're having troubles finding staff. Everybody in the United States is having trouble finding people to staff. You know, it's a problem. Next year, it might not be. So all I'm saying is, hey, think through it, you know, next year, we might have to think differently about this because we might not have the money to do it, and that might be an option for us. Just my two cents on it. I get where we are this year, though, and, you know, get that it makes, it makes sense to do, to do right now for the, for the students, so.
Can I just clarify that when we move students to another building, we provide transportation? So that is another cost.
Thank you for the clarification.
We don't put the burden on the family.
Okay. And Julie, I see your hand up, too.
Yeah, just to Jamie's point, I would just say, I would love, you know, if we ever get in that position where we have a choice of whether to offer this in all the schools, I think it would be great to return to this conversation because it seems like there are real, you know, there's, as Jamie said, there's some costs to it, but there's also real benefits to the individuals and to the school community of offering it all schools. So it would be great to just, you know, be able to kind of dedicate the time and talking about that topic specifically. But for today's conversation, I actually was just wondering, I, you may have already said this, but how long do we think it will take to fill an additional position?
We've actually, obviously, we'll have to post, but we had a decent candidate pool for the position we just filled. So we had a teacher that resigned, and we posted that position, filled it today, and I do have other candidates that, that know I'm here tonight and are hopeful that we'll be posting another. So, yep, I don't anticipate a problem. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I had a couple for you, too.
Yeah, sure.
So I was curious, first off, with the idea of moving schools and sending kids to a different elementary school or a different middle school, does that stand for the remainder of their elementary time? Or is it only while they're at that foundational level or transitional level? So if somebody's beginning first grade and has to move over to Blueberry Hill, will they remain at Blueberry Hill through fifth grade or would they return to their?
We typically have left that to the family. We will offer them to stay with their, we don't force them back. And that's the same thing in special education, too. If we move a child for programming and then they no longer need that, we have never, that I can recall, forced a family back. They've made their, you know, friends and all that, so we've maintained that. But if they wanted to, because there are families that have maybe one child who needs the program and the other one maybe has exited and depend, you know, so keeping their kids in the same school or the same, yeah.
But the option is there.
The option, yeah, is there.
And with three staff members, as you mentioned, you still have numbers kind of rolling in, there are still people registering, you're still doing testing. How many could three handle as a caseload before we might need to worry about adding a fourth with the numbers that we have now?
I don't see that being a possibility of needing more than this.
Not for this year, anyway. Okay. And then I was curious, too, about what the sort of day would look like for the three. I'm guessing that the person who's at Blueberry Hill is at Blueberry Hill for the day. I'm curious, will their entire day be direct instruction or do they also have space in the day for co-teaching or support for students when they're in their inclusion classroom?
It is mostly pullout, direct instruction. If we ask kids move and it make, if it makes sense, they have done some push-in blocks as well. If there are some extra spots, that's typically what they do. They'll, they'll push into a classroom and co-teach or do a small group or, so we do both, but it's primarily pullout because of the amount of, that we're supposed to provide.
Did you have something?
Nope.
Okay, sorry. And so does that provide then, are they also, in other words, providing, I guess, also the support for the transitional students or are those transitional students mostly?
Absolutely. No, they're going, it's just you can't really group them together, you know? So you may have, you know, I'm just looking at, you know, a certain grade level that has two students, so they'll be available at the same times for the win blocks, but one student is significantly higher than the other, so you can't really group them. So they do try to cross-group. So if you have a second grader and a third grader that are at the same level, that would be an appropriate group, but you wouldn't group a kindergarten with a fifth grader or, you know, so they do group when they can because you get more language out of students when you group. So that's their goal. The teachers have pretty, been motivated to get groups when they can because you just get more conversation. And the more conversation, the more language that you get, so that's always a goal.
All right. And then my last question, which really could be to anybody, I'm not 100% sure who would handle this, but I'm curious about resources for new families and L families as they're moving into town particularly. Do we have easily accessible information about where to find services, where to find information about special education, mental health, all of the situations that might come up? Is there sort of one easy location that families can look to? Is there a binder of some sort that gets passed out? Is there space for that to be made readily available?
That's a great question. I think there's room for improvement. I think some of it is available on the, on the websites, you know? We're trying to get better with making translation more available. You know, we do translate a lot of documents that go home, so our, you know, I know all of our lunch applications, we send out and have translated for the family. So anything leaving the school, we have a mechanism for that. The community piece, we probably could use some improvement. But I think, because we have so few families, they do connect with, especially with the L teachers that have frequently, you know, I know teachers have reached out to me to help families, parents get English lessons at local libraries and, you know, so I think we do a good job, but certainly can always improve. I don't know if anyone has any-
Yeah, I was thinking about the conversation you and I had the other day. Some L families come to us with established housing and they're well-positioned financially. Other L families come to us, you know, with housing transition or housing instability. And so there are agencies, I think, that we're able to connect those families with, and they, they receive the benefits of potentially being served under McKinney-Nentor, which would allow for transportation services and other community services.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. We have a possible motion.
I move that the school committee authorize the posting and hiring of an English language learner teacher.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, and roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you very much for coming by and keep us posted. Let's hear all the words happening.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, we have no executive session, and that brings us to our final motion.
I move that the school committee adjourn the August 23rd, 2022 school committee meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any conversation? Roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you very much, folks. We will see you again, I think, three weeks this time, on September 13th is our next meeting. Thank you. Have a lovely start to the new school year.
Good night.
Good evening.